Yes, tornado or whatever.
Well, I was a kid.
Watching.
Yeah.
And then. Cause I brought my whole return dollar.
I did.
I gotta go.
I gotta go.
We're.
Tomorrow. And then I gotta go her and then Johnson County just got destroyed by it. God, literally, one of, one of my friends works down there. She sent me pictures with the hills stones next to golf balls on the picnic table. And then that was golf ball size sale.
That's not.
Usually when they say golf ball size, they're exaggerating.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's quarter size.
Yeah.
This really was.
Oh, yeah, it's not just siding off houses and whole deal. So it was, it was a good storm. So I'll probably be heading down there for at least a few weeks.
I'd say.
I'm gonna guess.
Sounds like.
Of course, they haven't said nothing yet today, which is surprising. So that means they're either just absolutely covered up or they didn't get as many as.
How's it going?
You never know.
Hanging around here. Out in the wind from lunch this morning. It's chilly. Do it in about a minute. Probably like.
Oh, yeah.
Two nights left.
Do you have to go again? Do you have to go again? When is it coming?
Am I infringing on your space if I put that right there?
Are you going?
Yep.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is time to call to order the regular meeting of the Madison County Board of County Commissioners for May fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Let us all stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will now have a moment of silence. Thank you. We now need to look at the agenda. We have some additions to the printed agenda. The first item will be under section eight finance. We will need to add budget amendment thirteen B. The next section we need to amend is number ten, the county manager's report. B under that will be the wifi agreement for the town of Hot Springs. C will be the juvenile justice memorandum of understanding review. D will now be the board appointments and C, I'm sorry, E will be surplus property. Do we have any questions or any other additions?
Mr. Chairman, if you could delete number nine.
We will delete number nine. And the numbers will respond accordingly. County manager will become number nine, public comment ten, and adjournment eleven. We have no need for an executive session after the general session. Okay? Any other items? All right.
Yeah.
The chair will move that we approve the amended agenda.
A second.
We have a second. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
All those in favor of approving the amended agenda, please raise your hand. The agenda has been approved for the evening. Right, you have sent out to you the minutes. These are the minutes of Tuesday, April the second that you have before you. Both the special and regular meeting minutes. These have been re.
They were revised?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, I'm saying they were revised and having had, had opportunity to review the revised sets of minutes for both of those meetings, I make motion that they be approved as revised.
We have a motion to approve as revised.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the revised minutes, please raise your right hand. All right. Next item on our agenda this evening is Mr. Tom Colson. Welcome, Tom.
Thank you. This is hot. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight about two issues which, though distinct, can become related through their solutions. Though I'm a resident and property owner in Sandy mush and have spoken to neighbors about these issues, I'm not a spokesman for the people of that precinct. I'm a regular observer of the board of election meetings, and though I've told them of my plans to approach you, I have not requested and they have not offered their support of my requests. I come to you strictly as a citizen expressing his First Amendment right to petition the government for redress of ill-given grievance. I've spoken about these issues to individual commissioners and county managers in the past and would like to bring these issues past the conversation stage and into action. In nineteen ninety-three, voters in Sandy mush approved a resolution calling for the precinct to come under the protection of the Lester Volunteer Fire Department, an arrangement that exists to this day. The fire tax of fourteen cents per one hundred is collected by Madison County and remitted to Buncombe County, though it, and though it's more than three times the rate of Madison's other fire districts, we're not complaining. When this arrangement was begun, I don't believe either the citizens of the county realized that by becoming members of the Lester Fire Service, we also had coverage under the ambulance and emergency medical services. If I call nine one one for a medical emergency, my call is transferred to the Lester VFD for, to respond. Since then, each year, a portion of every Sandy mush property owner's real property tax goes to fund the county ambulance service, which does not serve them. According to the online, pardon me, according to the online Madison County budget, the ambulance contract comes to one million seventy-two thousand four hundred and four dollars for four point four percent of the total budget for the county of twenty-four thousand one hundred and, twenty, pardon me, twenty-four million one hundred thirty thousand seven hundred fifty-eight dollars. The tax office, tax assessor's office reports that Sandy mush property has an assessed value of fifty-nine million four hundred eighty-five thousand three hundred sixty-one after exemptions. At the current property tax rate of fifty-two cents per one hundred, the property tax for Sandy mush comes to three hundred and nine thousand one hundred thirty-two dollars and thirty-five cents, of which thirteen thousand six hundred and two is an annual gift to the county. I'd like to recommend that some of that unearned money go to updating the polling building on highway sixty-three. Each time the state board of elections asks for a rating on counties' polling places, Sandy mush falls short in a number of counts. There was even concern that the newly purchased voting equipment would not fit in the building. However, after Board Chairman Walling suggested marking the inside dimensions of the building on the Board of Elections Office floor and various arrangements were tried, a way was found to allow the building to accommodate the voting machines and the necessary furniture to record the vote. However, add a voter for each of the two voting stations and five poll workers, and it becomes a rather intimate arrangement. There would be a number of challenges to enlarging the polling building. A highway in front, a stream behind, and a narrow thirty by fifty lot with which to work. The first step might be to have the county attorneys or other official contact the heirs of the original renters of the property to see if an expansion of the lot is possible. Neither of the issues that I've raised tonight is gonna go away, nor will they remain static. The increasing population of precincts ordering Buncombe County as they have their housing shortage. And as Chairman Gentry has previously pointed out, and the upcoming property appraisal will do nothing to improve the discrepancy in taxation. The solution of them is in your hands, and I can only bring it to your attention and request action. No need to thank me. I was pretty careful in putting together these numbers. But I brought a handout for each of you showing them. You can check me if you like. And I'll give them a mandate. You can pass them out later. Thank you.
Any questions?
Um, I will say that I do appreciate you being persistent on the point because it has been discussed in the past for years, and the two issues are both, one is the taxation service issue, but also making sure that that small precinct does not go away into the night. Uh, there's a huge effort oftentimes, and there are two sides to, at least two sides to every issue. But if it is to remain a polling precinct to serve the public, it needs to be an adequate polling precinct. And that, that's a legitimate, very legitimate issue. So thank, I will say thank you, Tom. Okay? Gentlemen?
Next one.
All right. Mandy? I think we have report from Larry. I don't see Larry.
No.
Mr. Chairman, if y'all are comfortable that I can, I'm on that board and can present it.
Please, yes.
The, um, just be patient with me because it's not in the handouts, but the, um. Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Larry Pete was coming to you on behalf of the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council for Madison County tonight. That council alloc, reviews all issues of juvenile justice in the county and allocates funds in order to reduce both the prevalence of juvenile crime and also in your recidivism of people who are already in the juvenile system. So they have a amount of money that you will see on the Madison, the chart that says Madison County. It's page one hundred and eight. I'm sure you don't have anything else that says Madison County. It says Madison County NCDPS Community Programs County Funding Plan shows an available funds of seventy-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. Those are state funds that come to the county. There's a local match of twenty-three thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars, which is twenty percent. We have budgeted for that every year. It varies some depending on how much the state allocates. Of that amount of funds, that total, the JCPC has met and recommended that those funds go toward communities and schools, Madison Team Success, the amount of forty-eight thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars, the Kids at Work program, and the amount of eighteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars, and Project Challenge, and the amount of thirty-four thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Team Success and Project Challenge have been funded by JCPC for many years. Kids at Work, I think this is the second or third year that they've been funded. Um, but it's a culinary program. Jake Morrow, our juvenile court counselor, sits on this. There was an allocations committee that reviewed these and made recommendations, um, and that's what they're doing. You do not have to act on this because you'll act on it in your budget.
Okay, correct.
But that is just for your information. And I believe the other request that Mr. Pete has on behalf of that board is for a resolution.
Right.
That will ask the state to increase in their budget the amount of money that they're funding for the overall JCPC program, which would increase the, we would get a little more money in the county if that happened. It would increase our match, but it would be minimal what the increase would be. You can see that resolution there. It's something you always should consider. There's also a list of a number of other counties who have done it. But they're not asking for more money, for more county money, other than what the match would increase. They're saying that the funds that have been there don't go far enough to do what they need to do.
Now, Forrest, we would need to approve the resolution.
Yes, sir, if you wish to do it.
Okay, thank you. Gentlemen, there is a copy of your materials. Just a couple more sheets over one.
Yeah. Page one twelve, is that the absolute? I don't know if that.
Yeah, just before we get to section five.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Got it. Oh, there it is.
Okay, has everyone had the opportunity to review? Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
Make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion.
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council allocation expansion resolution, please raise your right hand. All right. Thank you again, Forrest. Ms. Rhea?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Evening.
I would like to introduce Mr. James Benz. He is our audit man extraordinary, working with Walden and Jenkins, and he's worked with us very closely on getting our audit done as efficiently as possible. And he's here tonight to present our, um, our audit to you for FY eighteen.
All right, thank you. Again, welcome. Now, we stream the meetings live, so we ask you to hold the mic fairly close. Therefore, it will go out on the live stream. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Well, good evening, everyone. As you mentioned, my name is James Benz. I'm the audit service partner for your two thousand and eighteen audit engagement, and tonight I'm here to present the drafts to you guys, as you have them, I believe, in paper form, maybe in electronic form. The primary document I'm gonna go through is the smaller document. It's our auditors' discussion and analysis. It goes over kind of a high-level result of the audit process. If at any point in time you have any questions, feel free to jump in, ask any questions, whether it be on the financial statements or the presentation, and then there's a period of questions at the end if you have those as well. So jumping in to page one, just kind of the agenda of what this document provides. It gives some information on the engagement team, the results of the audit. There's some financial information that we've included in the packet, and then some comments, recommendations, and other items that kind of are the outcome of the audit process itself. So going into page two, just a little bit of background on our firm. We're a large regional firm. We've got about a hundred employees who do nothing but solely work with governments throughout the year. We serve about four hundred governments throughout the entire southeast, and myself included spend a hundred percent of my time year-round working with local governments. So it is an industry that our firm focuses on, and it's about twenty-five percent of what our firm does is local government audits. Page three, getting into the results of the audit. When you talk about the results, the first thing we always want to make sure everyone understands is we're the external auditors, and the financial statements that we audit are prepared by management of the county. And we come in and we do an audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards, which through that process, we don't test a hundred percent of your transactions. We test enough of your activity that we can issue an opinion that states whether or not the financial statements are materially correct as presented. And so we don't give a hundred percent assurance on your information, but we do give an opinion that says it's materially correct, or I guess if it was not, we've given an opinion stating that it's not materially correct. But through our audit process, we are giving you an unmodified opinion, which is the, the clean opinion that states that the financial information and the financial statements prepared by your management is materially correct as presented in the draft forms that you guys have before you this evening. Through the audit process, you have a, you have two component units, one of which is the housing authority, and that is audited by a separate firm, and our conclusion as it relates to that entity is solely based on their auditor's report. So we did not audit any of their information, but they are included in your financial reports. And so our opinion is based on their auditor's opinion. On page four, obviously, when people think of the auditors, they think, kind of looking at the numbers and looking at the, how the financial information is relayed, but we also do review your accounting policies and procedures. We review estimates that management uses in preparing those information, and through that review in this year's audit, we didn't notice anything in an accounting process or policy that's sort of outside the norm of what a local government your size would have. Obviously, that's key information for you guys. If we, if you had policies or procedures in place that were kind of abnormal, we would want to make sure that you're aware of those. And so through the process, we do see that your accounting process, your policies and procedures are in line with other local governments of your size. On page five, we did have some audit adjustments in this year's audit. Those have all been provided to management, and I believe they're currently working to get those recorded into your accounting system as it is, but those will be reflective in your accounting general ledger system so that your accounting system does reflect the financial statements any time you go back and try to pull history on it. We worked, again, this was a first-year audit. A lot of first-year audits can't have bumps in them. We're a new firm, asking for new things. We did have cooperation from management. So I do appreciate management working with us to get that for us. Those who've never been through an audit, some call it a really fun process, others have other words for it. We send a list. We ask for a lot of information. We show up and we ask for more information. We, we turn over a lot of uncovered items and ask questions that, you know, sometimes haven't been asked in a while. Through the audit process, again, kind of reemphasizing our independence of the county. The county does not pay us for management fees, management services. We are paid as an external audit service, and so the information, the decisions made in the financial statements are those based on the county's management, and as the external independent auditors, we audit that information and then give an opinion as to whether or not it's materially correct or within the industry norms. On page seven, gonna jump into some financial highlights. Obviously, with a lot of local governments, your general fund tends to be where an external user is gonna go when they wanna know how's the county or how's the city looking. They tend to go to your general fund, and so we're, most of these are gonna focus on your general fund. On this page, we've got a three-year trend of how your general fund's fund balance has looked over the past three fiscal years, including fiscal year eighteen. And so what it's doing is we're showing kind of the breakdown of the categories of your fund balance between what's restricted by external parties versus what's unassigned and available for you to use going forward. And you can see kind of that bottom stack in your chart there. The unassigned balance for the last three years has had a, has a, has had a positive trend. It's gone from seven percent to the last two years sitting at ten point three percent. That's the funds that you guys have available. It's not a hundred percent cash. It doesn't mean that's your cash, but that's what you have available to you going forward. Off to the right, kind of the words to the chart, what that means is you have about thirty-eight days of cat, of reserves available in your fund balance at the end of June thirty, two thousand and eighteen. Everyone always wants to know, what does that mean? How do I look? The, the general benchmark that we use is GFPA, the Government Finance Officers Association, is a national organization that people will submit capers to for financial reporting purposes. Their benchmark is they typically like to see governments in the forty to sixty day range of available revenue or available fund balance. And so for your unassigned, you're, you're kind of right at the bottom of that range, but a little bit, you know, right below. You're at thirty-eight, they say forty to sixty, sixty five, or forty to sixty days, excuse me, is their range that they like to see a healthy fund balance set into. The other component that I, that we typically throw in when we're in North Carolina is you have that, you have a state statute that deals with restricted fund balance that you're not allowed to appropriate. It is in your fund balance, but because it's the way they do their calculation, it's not in cash form, so they don't want you to appropriate a receivable that you may not collect. So this year, that was sitting at seven point nine percent of your fund balance. If you add that to your unassigned number, your fund balance would be about sixty-seven days. And so trying to equate where you are, obviously, you can't allocate and use those dollars, but they are in your fund balance. On page eight, this just gives some financial information on your property taxes for the past three years. And you can see property tax rates have been flat. Your assessed values are what's creating the changes in the revenue streams, and, and it's breaking down to be about five hundred and fifty to five hundred and eighty dollars per person in the county. And that's not per household. That's just based on population. On page nine, this gives you kind of a, a very, very high-level snapshot of how the budget went for your general fund this last year. And so you can see throughout the year, there were amendments that would have increased the use of your fund balance or that net change line, so that your ending budget that was approved for operations for FY eighteen would have used five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars of fund balance. The actuals for the year, you actually added about seventy-seven thousand to the bottom line of fund balance. That, your, your revenue budgets were right on target. This comes through savings on the expenditure side, whether that be savings from the departments on, on operational, or maybe timing of a project pushing into the following year. But you were able to add to fund balance, albeit a small number, as opposed to using fund balance. I, I will say typically, you, you wanna see that number be a little bit stronger than where it is. Seventy-seven thousand, you're kind of just getting, paying for your normal costs, but you guys don't have a capital fund where you're, you're setting anything aside for kind of a long-term perspective. Obviously, decisions that you guys make each time on how your budgets are set can change with that decision, but the operations this year, you did, you added seventy-seven thousand, so good, good year for the general fund there. Page ten is your enterprise fund, which you all have the landfill fund. In a proprietary fund, we typically have, we typically look at your cash flows, and so the cash flows from operating purposes for the landfill, you had positive cash flows of about two hundred and thirty thousand from the landfill, and when you see cash flows, you always wanna look at how did we use those operating cash flows, and you can see down below that your, your primary use was you spent about a hundred and sixty-six thousand on capital purchases. So you're reinvesting into the landfill itself, buying equipment or upgrading facilities at the landfill. So that's good to see, you know, the cash flows being put back into the system. The net position of the fund is sitting at about a negative six hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars at the end of June thirty eighteen. A lot of that's tied to your post-closure liability. Accounting for a landfill, you have your C and D landfill, which is at about fifty-six percent capacity at June thirty. So under state law or really federal guidance, once you close a landfill, you have thirty years of monitoring that you have to do to make sure there are no leaks involved with that. The accounting for that estimate is you have to record that estimate along during the consumption or the use of the capacity of that landfill. So you do have a, a three point four million dollar liability on your books that's tied to a thirty-year monitoring requirement from EPA. On page eleven, kind of getting into the single audit aspect a little bit, this year there was a big change from the state on how you all recognize benefit payments within the county. This was statewide. Previously, any benefits such as your Medicaid benefits that are paid to the residents, they were reported in your, in your financial statements as your expenditures, even though the money never flows through your books. This year, the state decided that's not appropriate, and they required all counties to take that off of their schedule of federal awards. And so what that did is it lowered your threshold for testing purposes. And so in the, in prior year, you all reported twenty-six million dollars of federal expenditures and fourteen million dollars of state expenditures, which required you to only have one meta, one program, the Medicaid program, be tested each year. This year, with the change, you're reporting three million dollars of federal expenditures and one million dollars of state expenditures, and the requirement, because of that change, dropped our thresholds, and this year you had to have six major programs tested, which are the combination of federal and state programs. Also a change this year, the, the state required you all to contract with your auditors to perform eligibility determinations on the Medicaid program. We did that, we did that engagement, and it was issued back to the state in October. And the good news is the state's taking that back in-house for this next year. So that, that, that cost and that engagement will be handled by the State Department of our, State Office of the Auditor. Page twelve, you guys were also lucky this last year that you were selected for census data testing by the state, and we had to perform census data information testing on the data you submit to the state for your local government employee's retirement system. We conducted that audit and issued that report back to the state in October as well. They've released their samples for this year, and you all were not selected for two thousand and nineteen's testing. Page thirteen, the next several pages, they're gonna go into what we've. Page thirteen, the next several pages, they're gonna go into what we've cited as the, what's called the findings, the material weaknesses in the audit process that were brought out. The majority of these deal with accounting adjustments. I mentioned we had audit adjustments earlier. The majority of these deal with the recognition of items. We'll go through each one of them, but if you have any questions as we go through them, please feel free. The first item deals with a segregation of duties issue. Through this audit, there were several items, several areas of concern where the, the county has one employee responsible for more phases of that process than you'd like to see. We talked with management about these. I, I understand and there is maybe a little bit of an expectation that you'd have this at a smaller entity, but it's something that we can address and get rid of. I mean, it, it is something that is not impossible to eliminate. At the same time, it is a concern when you have one person responsible for an A to Z of a process, such as a bank reconciliation or payroll data input. And so we've cited this as, as a material weakness in the control process, but again, it's something that, that can be overcome. We can implement compensating controls to overcome the staffing constraints, if you will.
May I ask what that is? You say compensating controls. Give me an example of that, sir.
So as an example, the second bullet on here is the review and approval of bank reconciliations. Since we have all of that, the bank reconciliation and, and the quote, review happening by the same person, you would then have to, that's a little easier. You could bring in someone, you know, as an example, if it's the finance officer who's doing the bank reconciliation, maybe the county manager reviews or periodically reviews the bank reconciliations, or you could change up who's doing the bank rec and have the finance officer review the bank reconciliation. So trying to identify who needs to be the person doing versus who's qualified to be doing the reviewing.
I understand.
Identifying how to separate that. Second bullet specifically deals with some cash accounts that were not being reconciled as of June thirty, two thousand eighteen, and so not necessarily that they weren't being reviewed, but the reconciliations weren't timely happening. Through that process, there was about thirty-two thousand dollars of deposits that were not being reconciled to the liability listings in a fiduciary nature. And so again, a concern when you have a, a non-timely reconciliation of the account occurring and a discrepancy between that reconciliation. So we've, we've cited that. I think that's currently being worked on and trying to catch up, but an area that wasn't being addressed at that point in time.
Another question, sir. What, what would be a timely reconciliation period?
Generally, you try to, so if you're working on June thirty, two thousand eighteen, your bank's information's probably gonna come in mid-July, and you should do the bank reconciliations once the bank information comes in. So within the next month.
Okay, thank you.
The, the second item on this page, page fourteen, deals with the recognition of expenditures. Again, this, this is getting into kind of the, the details of the accounting adjustments that we posted. During the audit, we posted two-point-eight million dollars of adjustments dealing with the expenses. Mainly what that deals with is timing recognition. So the majority of these were recorded in fiscal year nineteen and should've been in fiscal year eighteen, so we moved the expenditures from one period to another. The, the only variable in that, that item is there was an adjustment to the landfill liability to include the contingency required by state statutes when you have a, a landfill of solid, municipal solid waste or construction and debris landfills. They require an additional contingency included in your reserves, along with the estimate from the engineers.
And if I could just clarify that, James, that our previous audit firm had a smaller amount there because they were not accounting for everything that could be, basically. And, but the key to that whole number is it's a good way to look at things because it's a worst-case scenario. Hopefully, we will not have to do that. In fact, one of those is on a closed MSW sale that's been closed since probably ninety-three or four. We got a long way to, we got ten more years on it, but we have not spent that much money on it over the years. We've probably spent fifteen thousand dollars or so on monitoring every year, so.
Yes, sir. It's a requirement that, that the legislation has, that you maintain through the thirty-year monitoring period.
So once the sale is closed, we've gotta monitor it for thirty years, then after thirty years, we're in a clear just, so we're roughly twenty-five years now then, right?
Uh, that's my calculation. Depends on whether they, I know the new one opened. I know when it opened, I don't know if they closed. I assume they closed the old one immediately, but I don't know that.
Gotcha.
I'll have to look at our records. But yeah, about the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-five.
Okay.
And then there's also an adjustment for the cell that's still open.
Yes. The, the cell that's at fifty-six capacity, you have, you have to accrue fifty-six percent of the contingency at this point. And so those additional rules were listed for that. On page fifteen, the first item there deals with some adjustments related to capital There was, it's, you wanna call it a simple mistake, but unfortunately with the accounting standards, they set thresholds that if we have to make an adjustment over a certain dollar amount, it has to be reported as a, a weakness. And so the depreciation calculations had a, just a formula error in the spreadsheet, and once we adjusted that formula error, depreciation changed by about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on the capital assets. And this finding primarily deals with the, the, the adjustment, the increase in the depreciation for that calculation error.
So were we overstating the assets?
I believe they were being understated.
Understated, okay.
Well, I'm sorry, overstating the assets, understating depreciation.
Right. Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Um, at the bottom of the page, revenue recognition. This deals with the accounting treatment for foreclosed properties that, that the counties has closed on for back owed taxes. The, the bulk of the adjustment was to record the current year activity into the general ledger, based on the sub ledger coming from the tax department. And then once you bring those foreclosures on your books, the standards ask that you record them at kind of what you deem to be the net realizable value and not necessarily the tax value that you seize them at. And so an adjustment was made to the current year, prior year for what, you know, working with Rio and management, and we determined based on kind of the history of what you're able to collect in cash off of those foreclosures, what the net realizable value would be as an estimate, and, and the adjustments were flown through for that. And so the, the bulk of the adjustment for six hundred and seventy-one thousand was primarily bringing the assets onto your books from the sub ledger to the general ledger, and then the, the estimate of the collectible, realizable amount of those properties. So that ultimately increased the, the fund balance for those. On the page sixteen, the first item on here deals with the, the, the reporting of your schedule of expenditures of federal and state awards, which is the schedule where you report all of your federal and state grant expenditures, and it, it's the primary driver of how to determine which programs need to be audited each year. For lack of a better way to put it, this has been done by your auditors in the past, and so we worked with management. It's something you're supposed to do, just like all the other financial information in your financial statements. Management should prepare that information, and then we audit the information and go out and test the compliance of that. And so working with them, this was kind of a first-year nuance, if you will. And so hopefully going forward, this will be something that's able to be provided at the same time as the trial balance and all the other financial information instead of being provided later subsequent to the audit process. The next three items deal with kind of the compliance, the, the, the single audit testing we performed this year. The, the ROP press, the ROP program, during our compliance testing of that, the eligibility, eligibility determinations, we, we identified several instances where there was not evidence and documentation maintained for the certification of the eligibility of the participants in the program. The interesting, I'll, I'll call it interesting, aspect is management of the program actually was aware of that before we showed up and had already started recertifying and doing the certifications before our testing, but it was subsequent to June thirty, two thousand eighteen. So we have to report the information as of June thirty eighteen, so it was not, eligibility determinations were not properly being done at that point in time, and, and they were aware, they've already identified several riders who, through the required reapplication process, elected not to reapply as they were known to not be eligible participants. So you can see there, four of our nine head tap riders, and forty of the disbursements were noted, or eight and a half percent of our sample size was noted to be ineligible riders for the program. And so they've, they've gone back to try to reevaluate and make sure that we're compliant with the requirements for those programs. The state foster care program, I'll asterisk this one and say that, again, this is draft information, excuse me, we've been provided some more information this afternoon, so we're gonna revisit this item here. Originally, we were not provided the recertification forms for the participants in the state foster care program. I think it was an issue of just being where they were filed and who was providing the information, but we've been given more information, so we'll follow up on this one and, and I'll give you return information on where that ends up going. I don't know, at this point in time, we haven't had a chance to go through the documents we were provided today, so. And then the last item is a control item, again, dealing with the ROP program. The way they're supposed to report it, so I'll preface and say it didn't result in any compliance issues. It's a control concern because the way that they're supposed to report the expenditures, the, the, the cost of providing a trip is supposed to be based on a, a spreadsheet provided by the state called, through the ITRE system, and it's an ITRE report, the Institution for Transportation, Research and Education, and it takes your cost of providing transportation services and it spits out what your cost per trip is. Currently, the way you're doing that cost per trip is at a different method, which isn't technically allowed, but you're still coming to a rate that's actually lower than what you would have if you were using the ITRE method. And so the controls are not working the way that the state guidance wants them to work, but you're getting to the right answer, if that makes sense. So we didn't have any question costs. A lot of places have seen this pop up because again, this year for a lot of counties has been the first time that, that many of these state programs have really popped up on the radar because of the change in the, in the thresholds of state program testing. So the last, the last four bullets are sort of just byproducts of our audit. They're not things that we cited as control deficiencies or material weaknesses, but just recommendations for management that we've kind of gone through with them of ways to kind of help improve the accounting process. On page twenty, I won't go through all of these, but I'll let you know they're all here for your information. GASB, who's the standard-setting body for government accounting, continues to churn out more auditing stand, or accounting standards. These lists out all the standards that are coming out in the next several years that may or may not be applicable to you all, but we wanna make sure you have the information in front of you because based on the decisions you all as the governing body make, management will have to make sure that the accounting is appropriate based on the standards. The biggest one to kind of point out is GASB eighty-seven, on page twenty-two. It deals with the accounting for leases, and it can be a pretty big standard that a lot of places will have to really go back and reassess any lease that we have to determine whether or not it's capital or not. In the past, if it was capital, you recorded it in your books. If it was operating, you just had some disclosures on it. Now, all of those leases are gonna be subject to accrual and reporting in your financial statements. The good news is that you have till twenty twenty-one to deal with it, so we'll make sure that there's some proactive information passed out and some steps taken, but it will be a big venture for accounting management to go through and just really dig in and look at all the leases you have, all the way down to our copied leases, if we have those, so. With that, that's all the questions or all the information I have to go through. Excuse me. If you all have any questions, I'd be happy to go through this.
I may have after I review this some.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
What level of risk do you see us at? What level of risk? You, it's, it's in our, our form, I think you said moderate? Is that what you said, moderate or minimal risk?
Risk for what?
Well, I, I, it was, it was in the, in the reports I read, where our risk level is. I, I'm not sure what that means, that's what I was asking.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
We don't have a risk that, for an overall entity, so I'm not sure what document you looked at to be able to.
It came in our, in our portfolio and had checked the boxes there, come in, apparently they talked to you as far as this, and says, well, is, is there a level of risk here? And, and the box was checked, yes, so.
The sheet right before the funding?
Yes.
That shows, that's what it's talking about.
In this document?
Should be in the full.
It's a mailroom, I think. Yes, yeah. It's okay, I'll, I'll, I'll dig through it, but this, this, that's not a problem.
Um, I think I know.
And there's always risk.
Right. There's not a, just a overall low risk, high risk, moderate risk. You're asking low-risk audit. Sorry, just hit me.
Yes, sir.
So that's a, a term from the federal government to determine if, if you're a low-risk audit T, that means you've had no material weaknesses and no compliance findings in the past two years.
Right.
And so if you, if you fit those qualifications, you qualify as a low-risk audit T, which the only thing that means is a coverage. So from a federal testing compliance standpoint, a low-risk entity has to obtain twenty percent coverage of all their federal expenditures, so we would have to test enough to say we've done twenty percent.
That's my level.
A high risk.
Yes, okay.
Means that we have to test forty percent.
Okay, that's where I was getting to, trying to put the, connect the dots.
Sorry.
No, that, that's absolutely fine. Timing of our audit.
Yes, sir.
Now, what, what, what do you, I'm, I'm coming from a school board perspective. We did ours in, in October. Our timing for this one is, is, is late, timely, or?
This is late.
Okay, how late?
It's due at the end of October.
Okay.
So there were a lot of issues, obviously cited in the findings here. There were a lot of instances where your prior auditors have done things for you that created some challenges for management. And from our standpoint, independent standards kind of define what we can do versus what management can do. And so the biggest issue was the, the CFA. I mean, I think working through that was a new step in management.
I'm sorry, CFA helped you more.
I'm sorry, that's the schedule of the federal expenditures.
Okay, you're gonna have to help me with that, okay, thank you.
Thank you. So it's, it's what lists out your three million dollars of federal expenditures and one and a half million of state expenditures. Trying to compile, compile all that information, our responsibility is to reconcile that to your general ledger expenditures because our opinion is to stake whether or not that's financially correct or materially correct as it's compared to your financial information. And it, that wasn't available for us until, I think, the end of the calendar year.
Okay.
And so once we got that, then it drove the compliance testing aspect. And so as you saw in here, we had to do six programs this year.
Instead of one.
Instead of one. Instead of being able to identify which six, we have to have that scheduled, otherwise we don't know exactly where your expenditures were and you're kind of shooting in the dark, if you will.
And, and I'm not throwing stones, I'm just trying to get a feel, this, this is my first rodeo on the, on this particular one as far as this, because our, our very competent county manager can't help us on our budget till we have to have a clean audit, so that's, that's why I'm asking these questions.
Absolutely.
So my, my second thing would, would be as, as we look through, are there, are we gonna be back on board for next year so we'll be more timely, in, in your opinion?
I do. This was the first year, and as I said, we've kind of worked through a lot of this. We've got procedures, we've identified how to, how to get these items done correctly, and, and, and having that groundwork of understanding who's responsible for what now and us knowing who to go to here for those items.
Understood. Your details.
We fully expect. There's no reason not to expect, it's not out in time.
I apologize for not authorizing, but you say it's reportable, you say is it reportable to our, our report here, our audit findings, or do you report it to someone else?
Our, our report goes to you all.
Okay.
And then obviously, it's submitted to the state, to the LGC.
I got you, yeah, got you.
And then you also have to do data collection submission, so it goes to the federal clearing house once it's through all those processes.
Okay.
And so otherwise, we don't submit it anywhere else. Your management will.
I just wanted to ask that question.
Absolutely, just wanted to go.
I, I have, I have one final question, I promise I'll be quiet. I always ask my, I, I am lying, I am lying. I always ask this about my auditors, the school board, and also with my finance officers. Anything we're doing here that's gonna get me and my people put in jail? Your opinion, sir.
Anything of concern is cited in your findings, so.
No, 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 you got, you know, in, in your professional opinion, are we in compliance with all those acronyms you just? in compliance with all those acronyms you just gave us?
Other than the three compliance items we've cited in here, the, the material weaknesses we've seen, that we noted are all disclosed in the...
I did the same thing with other auditors too, he always stepped on, back on his heels too, but thank you, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mark?
Matt?
I'm fine.
Wayne?
I'm good.
It's very clear that this is a new process with a new auditor. We are very happy to have you on board, very pleased with the thorough work that you and our team have done as we are transitioning into these new audits, and look forward to a long and productive relationship. All right? So, thank you, and safe travels back to Atlanta.
Thanks, sir.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Now, the next item is one that, that I've got, and I hope everybody on the internet's listening, and a few of you in the room, this Friday, from ten to twelve, right here at AB Tech, they're going to be recruiting the people that are going to be doing our census. Now, we need an accurate census in Madison County, okay? And the best way to get a good census is to have our folks do that census. So, if you know anybody that wants a good part-time job, all the way through the census process, weekend jobs, night jobs, these are excellent part-time jobs.
How long they last?
They'll last until approximately the end of twenty, because you have to verify, yep, and they will start hiring fairly soon. And so, we need local folks to show up Friday here at AB Tech, be at the initial meeting, and of course, they'll be recruiting after that, but if you know anybody in your community, anybody, any of you in here that want a good part-time job, and we need to go out in Madison County, make sure these forms are returned, make sure the people do it electronically, whatever we have to do, but we need an accurate count, not an inflated count, not an undercount, but if we don't get enough of our people to do it, then people will be brought in from the outside, but also, the real concern that a lot of us have, much of this is going to be done electronically. So, there will be people of Madison County that won't respond unless we go knock on the door and ask them to respond, and it drives state funding, it drives federal funding, and we just want it to be accurate, so I'm preaching a little bit of a sermon here, okay? So, check with Sherry, or check with Stacy Peet, and those are the folks here, but please spread the word on that, okay? Now, Paul's sitting back there, Paul, thank you for the article, and if you guys have not seen it, you know, a few months ago, Madison County was selected as the number-one rural library in America. Vance Super embraces that Morris Hill is the exporter of the year for the state of North Carolina.
Nice.
That is a Madison County industry, those people live here, the owners are here, and they've been a major player in our apprenticeship program and others. So, a Madison County, homegrown industry, the number-one industrial export was picked, and folks, that's something to say, so we need to be proud, and Paul, thank you for a great article on that. Okay? I'm going to be quiet now, and we're going to move on to Ms. Connie Harris.
Good evening.
Good evening, Connie.
The first item I have is an appointment to the Community Child Protection Team. At the March fifth, twenty nineteen, Social Services Board meeting, Pat Franklin, whom the Board of Commissioners had previously appointed to serve on that team, informed the Board that she was no longer able to serve. The Social Services Board voted unanimously to recommend to the Board of Commissioners that Krista Wallen, also a Social Services Board member, excuse me, be appointed to serve on the Community Child Protection Team, and Krista is willing to serve if appointed.
Okay, that does require an action of this board.
It does.
Yes, all right, do we have any...
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion.
I'll say it.
And a second to appoint Krista Wallen to serve on the Community Child Protection Team, representative of Madison County Social Services Board. Any further discussion? All of those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, thank you, Connie.
Thank you. The next item I have is the county's memorandum of understanding with the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services for the upcoming fiscal year. As, as most of you are probably aware, there was a Sessions Law in twenty seventeen that requires all counties to enter into these memorandums of understanding with DHHS for all social services programs excluding the Medicaid program. And last year was the first year that we had an MOU. The Social Services Board, at their meeting last week, reviewed the MOU and voted to approve signing the MOU and to recommend that the Board of Commissioners approve signing the MOU unanimously. There, there were some issues with the initial MOU that was presented to us, kept referring to us as Macon County, and I went back to DHHS a couple of times, and they have given us the correct version of that, so, so you do have, or the county manager has the, the updated version. We, um, the, the performance measures from last year are the same as they are presenting to us this year. The only measures being evaluated and subject to performance improvement and corrective action will be the child support program, which is separate from DSS, the energy programs, WorkFirst, and the food and nutrition services programs. And if you'd like, I can, I can give you a brief update of how we performed last calendar year, if you're, if you'd like to hear that.
If you would, please.
Okay. Cut that down.
Thank you, Connie.
Thank you, Connie.
And these are only the programs that DSS has, not child support, I don't, don't believe I would feel qualified to talk about their performance. But on page six, for the energy programs, the first performance measure, the county will process ninety-five percent of crisis intervention program applications within one business day for applicants with no heat or cooling source. And for, for that performance measure, for each month that we had those applications, we met or exceeded our goal and the state average. For the second performance, performance measure for the energy programs, the county will process ninety-five percent of crisis intervention program applications within two business days of the application date for applicants who have, who have a heat or cooling source. And again, for every month that we had applications, we met or exceeded that goal. On page seven, for the food and nutrition services programs, the first performance measure, the county will process ninety-five percent of expedited food and nutrition services applications within four calendar days from the date of application. We did not meet the goal for two of the twelve months for the, for that first performance measure. I believe in each of those two months, there were two applications that kept us from, from meeting that goal. For the second performance measure for food and nutrition services, the county will process ninety-five percent of regular FNS applications within twenty-five days from the date of the application, and for each of those twelve months, we did meet or exceed those standards. On page eight, continuing with food and nutrition services, number three, the county will ensure that ninety-five percent of food and nutrition services recertifications are processed on time, and we, we met that goal for each of the twelve months. Number four, the county will ensure that ninety percent of program integrity claims are established within one hundred and eighty days of the date of discovery. Again, for two of the twelve months in which we had program integrity cases, we did not meet the goal, but, but we did for the other ten months, and I believe for each of those two months, that was by one case. And finally, on page nine, for the WorkFirst program, the county will process ninety-five percent of WorkFirst applications within forty-five days of receipt. We did not meet the goal for one month out of the twelve of that performance measure. And again, I think that was, that was only by one case. And finally, the county will process ninety-five percent WorkFirst recertifications no later than the last day of the current recertification period. Madison County met or exceeded its goal and the state average for each month in which we had cases for that performance measure, so overall, I was very pleased with how we performed in those programs. We, we were not close to having any sort of corrective action, and in many months, met or exceeded the state average.
That's good. Well done, Connie.
Good, Connie. Good.
Gentlemen, any questions?
No.
All right.
Thank you, Connie.
Thank you, Connie.
Thank you very much.
Did we, do we need to vote?
Yes, on the, on the MOU?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. All right.
And that, again, just from the, the review, that is the exact same MOU we had previously, correct?
It is, and, and Mr. Laws had extensively interviewed the, the previous, or reviewed the previous MOU.
Okay, you have the MOU in front of you dated April fifteen nineteen. Do we have a motion?
I move we approve.
Say it again.
Motion and a second to approve the MOU for FY nineteen twenty. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
All of those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Ms. Rhea.
Ah, deja vu, the feeling that I've been standing at this podium one for four tonight. I have a long list of fun-filled stuff for you tonight. The first thing on my list is the April financial statements. Let me get my large pack of papers out. Okay, for April thirtieth, we are at eighty-three point three-three percent of our budget year. You will see on the first page, we have paid the majority of our debt for this year, there's one payment left that I believe is pay in May for the corporate extension loan. Our total unassigned and unrestricted bank balances is four point seven million dollars, almost four point eight, and that will carry us through the end of this year and through the first, pretty much the first quarter of next year, as, until our tax revenues start coming in. Of that four point seven million, three point seven belongs to the general fund, eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand to the landfill, and just under two hundred thousand to nine one one. Page two, you will see here month-to-date, if, this is a month of spending for the general fund as our tax revenues have mostly come in, so we tend to spend a little more than what we have coming in, but year-to-date, we are at a surplus, so to speak, of six hundred thousand dollars. Think, based on the expenditure, percentage of budget, we're a little under on revenues, but a little more under on expenses, so that's really nice, as opposed to where we were last year. Landfill is operating a small surplus of one hundred and ninety-four thousand, and the nine one one at a small surplus of twenty-six thousand. Again, these funds carry through, carry us through the end of the year. Okay? As far as on the other line items, everything is fairly similar to what we've been used to seeing. There is one thing, I believe, sorry, I'm looking for it on here, on the school loan.
I guess we're on page three, correct?
Would be page five of your financials, down in debt services. So, the debt services, you'll see there that it looks like it is over budget. We closed out a construction loan, and we'll talk about this when we get to the budget amendment as well. So, they finished the QSCB loan stuff for the school construction, that ended in February, and they did a big reconciliation and tied it back, and then amount that was left in that bank account from those proceeds was paid back towards the school loan, as per that agreement. So, I have a budget amendment to account for that in this, this week, this month's budget amendment that we'll talk about soon, but that's why that looks to be a little over budget.
Just to clarify, we took the, we took the leftover money and paid down the principal amount of the loan.
And that was, not saying that we wouldn't have done it, but that wasn't our choice, that was part of the loan agreement.
Correct.
Yes.
Well, that's what needed to be done.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, you do it your own house, right?
Correct.
That's right, reduce the debt.
Yes. Any questions on this part of the financial segment?
No.
And, and that money, it never actually went through our bank account, it went straight from that loan bank account to the loan.
Okay.
So, it didn't pass through the, the technical general fund funds. Okay? Next, you have the list of vendors that were paid for the month of April.
It's a little circular.
Super fun things to note on here. We have paid out some triple P this time to Mahack that we pay out every time, was sixty thousand dollars this month. It's nearing the end of that state grant year, I believe it ends May thirty-first.
What's, what's triple P?
Um, it's a...
Parenting program.
Okay, okay. Through the health department.
Thank you, parent.
We manage triple P for three counties, I believe. We get a percentage of the overall funds for managing this grant fund. The majority of the funds get sent to Mahack for the programs that they do, and they actually provide the program, and we just facilitate funds.
Got you.
Like, I think we used the leftover, quote, leftover funds last year to buy the playground that were put in by the health department.
Okay.
So, we had, of course, we paid for our flood insurance, and that went up a little bit. The community housing coalition had some draws for their home grants. Other than that, it was really pretty uneventful month, so to speak. Any questions on the vendor payments?
No. No, I don't see any.
Okay, then I'm going to move on to the tax refunds and releases, and I do need a vote on this. So, you will see the list here for April's tax refunds and releases. The releases total eleven thousand, just over eleven thousand dollars, and the refunds total just over seven hundred dollars.
Okay. The chair will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the tax bill release report for this month, as stated.
And we have a motion?
For the releases and refunds.
Yes, releases and refunds.
Release and...
And a second. Repeating this is for the...
The release and refunds.
The release date of four twenty-four nineteen and the refunds. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right.
The next thing I have for you gentlemen is really born for informational purposes, there is a budget amendment for this, but our JCPC Team Success has been awarded some discretionary funding from the state, so about this time of year, if they figure out there's a little extra money, you can ask for it, and our Team Success was awarded fourteen hundred and eighty-six dollars. This is a direct pass-through through the county to JCPC, so it does not require any kind of county match, just want to make you aware of that because it is on... Just want to make you aware of that because it is on the budget amendment, so, just for information. The award letter is attached there for you.
That's good.
Next, I have the Via quarterly report. Again, this is strictly for information. State statute says since we are paying them, that they have to provide this report for us to show us what they're doing with their funds. All right, next one, I need a vote, please. The next thing I have for you, this is letter E, is the FY eighteen amended audit contract. So this goes with the, Mr. Benz here. So with their, this amendment does two things. It extends the due date, because our original contract's at August, October thirty-first, and this modifies that to the end of May, and it there's also a fee increase. The fee increase is due to those, excuse me, prior period adjustments, and as well as the additional testing they had to do for the CISA state and federal programs. Our original quote had four programs, and they had to test six, correct? So that increases their fee just a little bit, by thirty-two thousand two hundred dollars. And there's a budget amendment to do that when we get there. So I need your approval on this amended contract. Please.
Now, next time we have an audit, will, will we get, some of this will be reduced because you won't have to test as many, is that correct?
Yes, sir. It's still the same pricing from the original.
Okay.
This is just one-time pricing.
I move to approve the amended contract to the audit count.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the amended audit contract, please raise your right hand.
All right, now, on to the twenty-nineteen contract. So we need to put them under contract for our twenty-nineteen audit. We like to do this after the audit's finished, but we are getting real close to a cutoff date to get under contract. This contract states our audit report is due October thirty-first. We're going to do everything within our power to hit that this year, pending asbestos and tropical storms and hurricanes and whatever, the weather and life attempts to throw at us. This contract is for the original contract price that they put in their bid, which is for four programs. So if they're, if there is more than four programs they have to test, there might be a small fee increase. We do not project any prior period adjustments, because hopefully we found them all, and we've got that taken care of. So I need a vote, please, to accept the FY nineteen audit contract with Malden and Jenkins.
Mr. Chair, I make the motion we accept the FY two thousand and nineteen audit contract.
So I've got a quick question before we answer that. On the memo, am I reading that incorrectly? The memo says the auditors and I anticipate a fee increase due to additional testing that we will, that we foresee will be needed for the single audit, so that contradicts what was just stated.
Well, I, I personally foresee, we had to test six programs for FY eighteen, and I think we are also foreseeing probably six next year.
Okay.
But those are, I think, their original proposal was two to three thousand apiece. So if that three thousand still stands and they have to do two more, that's six thousand dollars, not thirty-two thousand. But we won't know until we get there, and if the state decides to change their mind in the meantime on how we test them, that would also impact that.
So we're looking at
Base rate of forty-three five.
Back up here and look at
Seventy-five percent cap for interim.
So the current contract is for a total of forty-seven five with the
Correct. That was the original, yes.
Mm-hmm.
That was the original, correct?
Correct. If they have to test those two more programs, that could be an additional six thousand on top of that, but not the thirty-two thousand that we have this year.
Yeah.
Just trying to give you a real honest
Well, like Commissioner Wexler said, that, the question I asked was that it would be, that it would go back to the original fee, so
Right, if, if they only have to test those four programs, four programs.
When we entered into the contract, we had negotiated four.
Four.
Not knowing that the state was going to smack us with six. We thought four was going to be adequate at the time.
Yeah. Okay. I see.
If I remember correctly.
You are correct.
That's correct.
You are correct.
All right.
All right? Further discussion?
No, I think I said my piece.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the two thousand and nineteen audit contract, please raise your right hand.
Thank you. The next thing I have for you, the school has asked for additional lottery funds to be paid out before the end of this fiscal year for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to construct a metal building to house the alternative school. So I need a vote on that, and then I'll need Commissioner Gentry to sign that before you leave today, if you guys agree. The lottery funds simply pass through our budget. They are not monies that we hold, and they are from the lottery. We've done, given them a little bit of money, a little bit, one hundred and eighty-three thousand, already to do the other two, is it energy payments, is that right, Forrest?
Yes.
This year, but they really want to get this construction progress, project finished before next school year starts, so they're asking for an additional two hundred and fifty thousand for the construction of this alternative school building.
So did we just talk about paying for that building before? I thought we had already paid for that building.
I think at one point in time, we had talked about doing it under the QSCB school money for the school loan, but time
We refined it.
Did not happen that way.
That's correct, yeah, that's right. There was a February, end of February deadline on closing that.
Okay.
And there were some projects to try to spin more out of that before it got paid down toward the loan. They couldn't meet that deadline, so they're asking for lottery funds. School system had built a pretty good reserve on lottery funds the last three or four years, five or six years, actually.
The last time they touched it was in twenty sixteen for a mere thirty thousand dollars.
And the balance in there after this would be
I think with Dr. Hoffman in place, he's really looking at how all of those sources, lottery, forty forty-two, and then other things that will come up soon, all of those sources are kind of being used, which I think is
Is wise.
If we
Yeah.
If you approve this two hundred and fifty thousand, then they would have two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-two cents remaining in their lottery funds as of April twenty-sixth.
Yeah, and that's added to quarterly.
Correct.
Yes.
I don't understand.
Okay.
I, in the past, we always had someone from the school here to request this.
Dr. Lottery.
No.
Yeah. Dr. Wilcox.
Well.
Came, every time he needed lottery funds, he was here.
And we do that, and we, you know, have moved away from that. Forty forty-two has been the bigger discussion surrounding that, because that is money that is local revenue, but it has to be used for the schools.
Right.
School construction and some equipment.
Right.
You know, there's been a long-term discussion going back many years about how often people have to come and ask for that, and we have moved in the last two years to where we're giving the schools upfront whatever's coming in that year. And then kind of letting them do what they need, and if they have something above that, they come back to kind of stipulate, and they've done that, we've done that for two years now, and it's been
Okay.
Lottery funds are different because they're not even on our, they're not even on our books at all.
Correct.
In fact, until two years ago, well, this was something, we may have had an issue with our audit two or three years ago, schools had just been using the lottery funds since it didn't come through us, they'd just been doing it. And then we found out, I think that was probably three years ago, before Rhea was here, that's not how you're supposed to be doing that, even though it's not your money or on your books, it has to come through. So that's a relatively new, in fact, that thirty thousand, he'd come to us for, he might have, I'm sure he came to tell everybody he was going to give thirty thousand dollars of the, they didn't have kind of list for that.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Second. All those in favor of approving the Board of Education's request, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in lottery funds to build the new alternative school at Madison High School, please raise your right hand.
All right, two more. We're in, we're in the final count down here. The next thing I have up for your vote is budget amendment number thirteen, lucky number thirteen for us. There's some fun stuff on here, so we are truing up some of the tax revenues based on our, our latest and greatest projections, as well as some of the sales tax revenues, which have been coming in a little over what we're budgeting, so we're anticipating a little more for this year. And reallocating a few things through some of our other departments, reallocating some lapse salaries to cover salaries in other places, as well as other building expenses that have popped up. Let's see, the health department got additional funding for Project Lazarus, which was originally cut this year, and the state has found a little bit of money, so we've got an additional five hundred dollars for that coming in.
Looks like we allocated fifteen thousand to Barnard Park and the Island to help with their flood cleanup, is that correct?
Yeah, that's an estimate that we're putting in the line most on what we're seeing down there, but they don't need that much, but we're
Right.
We have gotten additional, we've got our Medicaid cost element is back on track as far as getting the funds that are due to us. We've got two years' worth of funds this year, we got FY seventeen and FY eighteen. So there's a budget increase of a hundred and seventy, excuse me, a hundred and seventy-nine thousand in revenue for that. We originally projected a hundred and fifty, we got that for FY seventeen, and now FY eighteen has come in. So that's really nice. And, let's see, anything else fabulous on here? You've got your JCPC thing that I mentioned earlier, the lottery funds I mentioned earlier. We got additional forest timber receipts that flow through to the school system, eighty-eight hundred dollars on here. And we are, with this budget amendment and some of these extra revenues we've got, we are reducing our amount that we were planning to take from fund balance by two hundred and forty thousand, and adding thirty-six thousand to contingency.
So, not to belabor the point of budget amendments, but we look at what happened last year, where we got our revenues just right, our expenses came below, that is the goal at all times, that's the goal of this budget amendment. Last year, we had to deal with reduction in federal inmate revenues, we started in January cutting those revenues and associated expenses, not associated expenses, other expenses in the county. And then we're doing the same thing now, not, not as, we've not had anywhere near as big a decrease in anything else, but some of our prior year property taxes, things like that. So we're being careful whenever we are, whenever there's a revenue that's increasing somewhere, we're looking at other revenues to decrease. We are not, unless it's a grant, increasing the expenses to go with it, because you've got to, it's just not the way to do it, so.
Makes sense.
So at the end of the day, you got thirty-six thousand dollars more going to contingency, which is the line that's there for unforeseen issues that come through the year, but it's also where we know we have marked money that we won't spend if we don't pull it out of there, and that's our guaranteed number that will go to fund balance as long as everyone else stays with it.
Okay. So we have two budget amendments. The first one is clean thirteen.
Yes, just thirteen.
All right. Do we have a motion for budget amendment thirteen?
I move we approve budget amendment thirteen.
We have a motion, I will second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the approval of budget amendment thirteen, please raise your right hand. Now, moving on to B.
Last and certainly not least, budget amendment thirteen, bup bup, B. This budget amendment has three things on it. First is the school debt that I spoke to you about earlier, where we pulled the remaining funds out of that loan to pay down the debt. Didn't make it on the original, because I've gotten from Malden, Jenkins, debt they had to record that. That was two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, so that's the first part. The second part is the health department has paid drug-free community grant, and I met with them yesterday to, to just reconcile some things, because that grant year is a different cycle than our fiscal year, and it gets a little confusing. And they had some carry-forward funds, and so this was reallocating some salaries, et cetera, to get that carry-forward money on our books, so that they can finish out our, our fiscal year with the money that they're supposed to have there. And the third part is to allocate additional funds, ninety-two thousand, six hundred dollars to the sheriff's department for vehicles, additional things like building repairs, some salaries, and other things that we anticipate he's going to need by the end of the year.
So just to review, the two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars is actually a debt reduction on the QPC?
Correct.
Okay, that, that's the amount of that debt reduction. Okay. Principal, principal reduction.
Principal reduction.
Okay.
So the salary money for the sheriff's budget is for detention officers for the juveniles, which we'll get to in a minute.
Euro for that.
Then we'll go ahead and get started on that. Twenty-five thousand for a vehicle, which would be the third vehicle that the county has funded this fiscal year. And then the remaining fifty is based on the sheriff's overages in his budget for the last two fiscal years. So last year, he went fifty-six thousand dollars over budget the year before that, a hundred and seventeen, no, sorry, a hundred and nineteen the year before. We might as well prepare for it because it's, you know, unless we're going to stop paying for things over there, that's where we are, it's not because we're going to budget it. We have budgeted a full amount requested, have not exceeded it every one of those years, and we have added money throughout the year for that. We've done that again this year, and we're just preparing for what we know is going to happen before the end of the year, go ahead and put it in there, let it be sitting there.
And I believe with this contingency coming out force is calculated, I believe the remaining balance in contingency would be just under eighty thousand dollars.
That's correct.
And of course, our goal is to hopefully next month, maybe add a little to that, depending on how things fall out, but.
All right, thank you, Rhea. What is the wish of the board?
Move we approve budget amendment thirteen B.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. All right. Anything else, Ms. Rhea?
No, sir, that's it.
All right. Forrest, I believe you're up.
I'm up. Oh, my lungs.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, a couple of things that we did not discuss earlier, a couple of updates. One is, as you all are aware, the DMV office reopened three days a week on April thirtieth in a temporary location. You all will recall, the representative from DMV was here back then at the April meeting. Poor guy. Poor guy, he was kinda sitting out here to have to deal with everybody, and, and he did, but, uh, he said it might be a year, uh, before they can get that done. All of you, uh, others in the county, uh, involved official roles and unofficial roles, everybody who knew anybody in Raleigh, bipartisan effort, or call folks, I will say, um, our state representative, Michelle Presnel, didn't let this go from the beginning. She stayed there, stayed on until she had the commissioner's attention, uh, commissioner of motor vehicles. So we're at a good start. We are working, they, DMV is committed to opening, uh, permanently, it'll be five days a week. We are working on a lease agreement for them to be in a permanent space. It'll be downtown Marshall. They're getting that with us, uh, we're working through that with them, so we expect that to be moving forward. It is a very busy office, as everybody knows. This morning, there were about twenty-five people lined up at eight-thirty. They don't get through all that many, you know, it's a very slow line, the way it moves, but it's very important. I've never seen anything that we have shared go viral the way this did. We, on Monday afternoon before it opened, a man posted on Facebook, it got shared six hundred times, last I looked, which has been a week. It got seen by twenty-four, twenty-five thousand people. Put some signs up around town, but there was nothing else there, and there was a line the next morning, so that tells you a lot about the demand. Very good work, and all we've been involved with that. The, um, French Broad Electric, uh, got a letter today, earlier last year, back in July, the previous board, uh, well, the, the budget for the current year that was approved last year included, and we've done this for about three years, a hundred thousand dollars budgeted for grant matching. This is from the sales tax funds for economic development and education that were implemented about three years ago. This year, that money, uh, was reserved for a grant application by French Broad, well, by the county and French Broad Electric for internet service and upper and lower shut-in. We had known for several months that that was going to get awarded, and the official word just came in a few weeks ago. That'll be a three hundred thousand dollar grant to, that will go to French Broad. There's a ninety thousand dollar county match that is in our budget. It's already there in grant matching. We will pay that out to get that started. That'll serve around five hundred homes there and easing back into Hot Springs. That's in addition to the three million dollar USDA grant that was awarded, uh, announced last year, awarded earlier this year. Uh, they're working through that to serve twelve hundred homes in Laurel, and then on their own with their own program, which all of these things will help feed back into their program. They're expanding to another thousand homes, uh, in the county. So when you compare this to where we were four years ago, uh, and the efforts that have been taken by French Broad and by the county, uh, starting with Ryan Cody, going to Sarah Nichols, going to all of you all who helped to put that money aside and really make that a priority. You're really seeing some things move forward on an issue that's very important to the county. So that's a very good, big positive update. The solid waste department has received a sixteen thousand dollar grant from the Department of Environmental Quality. Uh, it's a community waste reduction and recycling grant. That'll be used to buy eleven sets of metal signs for each convenience, convenience center in the landfill. That'll, they'll model themselves after Marshall. That's been the prototype to change that signage, it's much more professional. But they will also have the signage on the recycling, will have pictures of what's to be put in there, with shook up with everything.
That's great.
It'll also purchase two fourteen-foot gooseneck trailers that are for cardboard recycling. That, the idea is to actually have those move around the county outside of just the convenience centers. That should help with our cardboard recycling and the penny a pound program for the schools, which currently provides twelve thousand, five hundred dollars a year to the school system. So that's funded for next fiscal year. Really good work by our solid waste, uh, director, Sam Lunsford, and his, uh, staff, Rebecca Shook, helped to play a lot with that. That's gonna be good for the county.
That's good, that's good.
The, um, uh, also, because he, uh, is here tonight, and I did talk to him prior to the meeting, um, Jamie Lunsford will be joining us as our IT director. He is serving as the interim IT director for a couple of months. Uh, we're very pleased to have him step into that role on a permanent capacity. Been with the county for five or six years, um, does a great job dealing with all of us who don't specialize in computers for the most part, so we're very pleased to see that moving forward. Are there any questions on either? Oh, and also on, on budget, we are, um, doing okay for the current year. Our expenses are, are well below where they need to be, and we're adjusting revenues, as you heard, getting where they need to be, and we feel like to the end of the year, hopefully, we've, you know, we basically had a rounding error at the end of last year. And we want more than that. If we're gonna be able to build a fund balance, which is how we afford to pay for building renovations, all those major projects, we're gonna have to get those numbers up, um, and we're working on that process for next year. Are there any questions on any of that?
Gentlemen?
No.
Okay, good, boys.
I believe the next item is the added agenda item of a downtown wireless grant. Uh, we have received, uh, we were sought out by the Department of Natural and Cultural Resources with some unexpended, I think it was a federal grant, uh, the state machine, uh, that they need to be able to deal with before the end of the year, and they are familiar with working with Madison County through the broadband office and through downtown Strong, uh, hometown Strong. And they have approached us with fifty thousand dollars to install wireless internet in downtown Hot Springs. So you have in front of you a memorandum of agreement with the Department of Natural and Cultural Resources that will allow them to encumber those funds and give them to us, so we would then do an RFP for a private provider. Uh, the broadband infrastructure office would help us write that RFP. We would receive bids for that, and they would install the service. Uh, this is intended to address the homework gap for students who, uh, do not have internet access at home, uh, ability to get things after hours. So we have met with, uh, Mayor Harrison in Hot Springs about how to make that work a little better with some outdoor areas there, and he's very excited about that. Uh, we have talked. The state will pay for the installation. There's an ongoing monthly cost to these sorts of things. There are two models for doing that. Uh, the one that we know we will be able to work through, or to talk with them, our TDA, Tourism Development Authority, will pay for that, uh, monthly cost, because there is a benefit to tourism as well. And then we will work with some of the businesses down there. There are other towns who have done this. They're currently paying somebody if they have wireless in their business. Now this will be provided, so they can pay a subscription to this. There'll be a splash page for anybody who signs up that says something about welcome to Hot Springs. It might feature those businesses. There are several models for that, so we're not on the hook for anything here, except seeing it through. It's a really good opportunity for us, uh, and really good. We're one of, I think, four or five, uh, communities in the state that have been approached. They need your approval before signing the MOU to allow us to basically promise to work with the state to see this through.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the, uh, MOU.
I will second that motion. Have any other discussions, gentlemen? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right.
And next you have the juvenile inmate memorandum of agreement, which can receive a final copy of from the state today. They, they made no change really to what our attorney had sent back in February or March. But this would, um, the, the change is substantive, but, but something to work through. We, we have been talking about fifteen juvenile inmates that the state would guarantee us to have. So the difference in this and the federal inmate system and, and most inmate systems, where we're, you've got a certain number of beds, and you're paid by who is with you at that time, and if they need a bed to get the money, if not, uh, you don't get the money. So there's some unpredictability there based on the ebb and flow of that system. The state is willing, in this situation, to guarantee under their contract funding for at least fifteen inmates, whether they're housed here or not. Now, the change since we last talked is that they would need us to have availability for nineteen. And speaking, and that would mean we would get paid for the additional four whenever we were, whenever we have them, but they need to know those beds are available, makes it more attractive. So we've looked at our, uh, staffing ratios, speaking with the sheriff, he says there's no issue. We've talked with the Department of Public Safety, Juvenile Justice. They're okay with it. It requires, it would require for those additional four to be, um, the fifteen will be housed in fifteen two-bed cells, one to a cell. They prefer people be one to a cell. In those cases where they need those four extras, they're okay with those being doubled up. So that allows us to use the same space, no additional staffing. So if you all do that, it would increase revenues for next year over what we had for the current year by a net of five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, and it would increase us over having thirty federal inmates by two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. If you did, if you did not want to exceed fifteen, you didn't want to do double bonky, which everybody says, you know, the people who have to be responsible best say is okay. But if you wanted to go with fifteen, we would only be guaranteed payment for eleven. So we'd have to have space for fifteen. They gotta have their little room for. That would reduce your revenue increase to a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars. The expenses associated with that, because the revenues are over a million dollars, but you have to hire four additional, uh, detention officers to meet the supervision requirements for juveniles. We have to hire, I cannot remember if it's two positions or one and a half educational positions to provide the education program. I believe it's two full-time, to work through that side of things. And we think we're budgeting conservatively. The first year, we're gonna have a little more expense. After that, Title I funds will reimburse more, probably a good bit of the education expense. So those are the things we're looking at. In addition, this has not been determined and can be determined when y'all do your budget, but these numbers account for hiring an additional four detention officers for a total of eight, simply because when they opened the jail, none of y'all were on the board. I wasn't here, but it was during the recession when they had to open that jail, and the sheriff was being helpful to the county by saying, we can go bare minimum on staffing. They did that, they're meeting every expectation, every standard, uh, but ideally, we could add more. This is an opportunity to do that, to help with coverage, um, if there is turnover, it, it helps you some there. That decision is up to y'all when you do budget, but if you did, you could still add five hundred thousand dollars to increase that. That is where it is. It's ready for you all to consider. The only thing on here is that, I think there's a TBD date on there regarding when it is signed. In section one. Any questions?
I was, I was still working on the MOU for the, between the county and the sheriff's department.
Donnie, we'll leave you there.
And Matt, you're referring to if the program goes away.
The extra personnel goes away, correct?
Yes, sir.
Well, I, I wasn't at the meeting, I don't think, when this was officially sent in, correct? When this was sent in.
I don't recall. But if you weren't, you weren't. I don't recall behind.
I wasn't worried that it had, it had been sent in, but, uh, my concerns with the juvenile inmate program are, are, are several. The number of jail cells we have available, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna turn these people loose? When you look in that paper every week, it's full of people we've arrested for drugs and various other things. Are we gonna let those people go to the side and, and not hold them as we should, so hold the juveniles? You know, we're hiring more jailers, and, and I understand that if the program goes away, that, then the jailers will be out of, out of a job. Are we gonna make them sign something that they are aware of that? That they know that if this program ends, that their job will be eliminated? You know, the transportation of the juveniles back to the counties where they have to have a, a trial, or, or whether it may be a doctor or healthcare. You know, all these things will be a financial burden on the county. And we just approved a, a budget amendment for the sheriff, and he was over his budget in two thousand seventeen by a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, and he was over in two thousand eighteen by fifty-six thousand. Now we're gonna turn him loose with this kind of money? I think there's a serious issue with money management here that I would question before I could see somebody handling that kind of money and leaving the county with a liability of the juveniles, which could be, you know, a lawsuit toward the county, whether it be from their parents, or whether it be from whoever.
So I will clarify on the expense side, other than those things between the county where we have to have to run it, the four or the eight, plus the education piece, things directly tied to it. The additional money, we wanna be very careful with allocating to one-time expenses such as, um, construction and equipment, things like that. Not necessarily at the sheriff's office, though they may be, uh, probably would vary by the year, it was a split multi-year deal. So it would not be the sheriff's office getting all the money from this and being able to do what they want. It would be additional money that would be, first of all, has to go toward the debt payment for the jail, so it makes up for that. There's more money over top of that. It can, um, it would be part of our bottom line revenues that we looked at every year on how to do, in my mind, as long as I'm here, which, you know, you can't guarantee anything. I know I can't guarantee that, but as long as those things are there, it would be my advice every budget year not to tie anything beyond those minimum number of positions because it's so unlikely, whether it's grant funding or anything else, any department would ever do that. Rarely do you see those people leave when the grant fund's running. Which is fine if you make a conscious decision, by gosh, we don't wanna lose this person, let's come up with the money. But what usually happens is, the grant came in six years ago, everybody's gone out, person's still there, and nobody who was around at the time knows it. We wanna avoid that. The rest of your questions are, you know.
Who will, who will initially oversee the money coming in for this program? Who will oversee it?
It will come, just like every department, it would come, uh, the sheriff's office will be responsible for invoicing and, and receiving that payment, and then it would go to finance to be deposited and recorded in our general system. So it's, it's the same way that, uh.
Can we have an audit on this every year, on the money coming from this program?
It's up to y'all.
That, since that would be coming from a federal or state agency, it would be part of our single audit, whether it got picked for the direct portion, like the DSS has or wrote, or whatever. It depends on the volume, but it is still overlooked as part of the county audit. And it would, it's more likely to be tested as part of that, um, state and federal single audit.
So, but, but we could single it out, correct? If we requested?
You can, you could do that. There might be an additional fee for that. Um, but there would be, you could put, um, standards in place internally here at the county, whether you hire a third-party local accountant or just have the finance office present reports whenever you deem necessary, um, to, so you can keep an eye on those things.
Well, the sheriff has a finance, financial person, correct?
But you, I mean, that could be, you could have the finance, the county finance office kind of go through and fact-check that, if that's what you guys deem is appropriate, as well as, I still am confident it would be part of the single audit with the amount of money we're talking about.
With the size of the funds.
The size of that fund that would be.
It, it would fall into that category.
I think it would fall into the single audit quite well. You can request that, but that may mean we have to, if that's smaller than another bucket they would have tested, we may have to do an additional program to hit that threshold, but.
Okay.
And, and all the finances, it's actually, from the financial side, it's simpler. It's really easy to monitor because it is a simple blanket revenues split up by month. The expenses that we know are there, so it's no different from, uh, anything else we do with that budget. We know expenses are here, revenues are here. That's where it is. It is. We know expenses are here, revenues are here. That's where it is. It is, you know, it's easy to find out what's going on with the feds too, because you can get the numbers and compare them. But that's a little more complicated as if the numbers fluctuate. These numbers shouldn't fluctuate.
Correct.
So financially, it'll be clear, um, what y'all have to do as a board is determine, you know, from a financial standpoint and then a, you know, uh, how it's managed standpoint as far as the, uh, inside the jail type of thing, which is more belonging to the sheriff. Does belong to sheriff, but you, but you all have to be, county's on the line for anything that happens. It's tough to operate a jail no matter what. It is a difficult, high liability situation that almost every county has to do because we can't, you know, unless we have zero crime, we won't have these things. Um, it's a tough, high-risk place, which is why we have insurance regarding the finances. And it's why these folks would go through the training that they would be required to go to have it, uh, and do those sorts of things.
And to back up and answer Commissioner Brigman's first question, um, it was discussed at the meeting that you weren't at, um, in the event that you have, uh, that we have to clear out bed space, if that were to be an issue. I mean, these beds are dedicated for the juveniles.
Right.
First and foremost. But if you have a situation where you have to clear out space, uh, we could farm them out to Buncombe County and they've already got, the sheriff already has an agreement with that.
Then we pay Buncombe County to house.
I think it was forty dollars a day, if I remember correctly, was what the agreement was.
We're losing our federal inmates, so it, it should be washed.
We're losing our federal inmate program?
Yeah, by, by, by law.
Okay.
Yeah, right. We're, we're not supplanting the federal inmate program. The way the law is structured, what Commissioner Goforth is referring to, is that the, for, the current federal inmate program as it exists today, will not exist in the future.
Yeah.
It's going away. So, yeah.
Yeah, we bought, we bought a van and hired two people for that program. Forrest, do you?
And on the going away, I mean, we assume that because of the changes in federal. It's interesting, because I know that there are counties that are actually seeing an increase in federal inmates and have swayed over the last few months. We've seen a small increase. It kinda ebbs and flows. But they're seeing a number go in big next year. And I will say for this year, sheriff's fed inmates have declined some, but he's picked up on other county inmates from other counties and some state inmates to keep that close to neutral. Not quite, but it's close. Um, but we did run the number, obviously, per, per bed. We get two forty-four a day for housing somebody. We pay forty or fifty to housing in Buncombe County. Uh, that could work that way.
You gotta, you gotta talk about juveniles. You don't have that healthcare, uh, risk of a fifty-year-old drug addict that's gonna be going to the hospital for, you know, whatever. So whatever you get to juveniles, they normally don't have no problems. And.
If they do, they're covered under their parents' plan or by Medicaid.
Fourteen-day stay normally.
Yeah, and, and again, the average stay, anybody that's concerned about the bunking situation, or you have to double up for maybe a brief period of time, if we did have to, um, you know, the average stay of these kids is fourteen days.
Correct.
Before they rotate out of the system. So I would as, I, I would assume that anytime, at any point when we're over capacity, I think it's safe to assume that it would be a very temporary period.
Do you think that by doing this, Forrest, that there's a possibility that we have to expand our jail?
There shouldn't be, uh, when we're ready.
Yeah.
To evaluate in the future, based on different trends, whether that would be a wise thing to do. But this would not require that because we've evaluated the number of local beds that we generally need and we've accounted for. If we had an influx and we had to house some in Buncombe County, given the trends that we've seen, uh, it shouldn't require that. If those trends emerge, I think they'll emerge over time, and we'll have to revisit everything likely probably would have to do anyway. Um, but there's nothing here that would require additional space. It's using what we have now.
So the money coming in will be used to pay off the debt for the jail?
It would depend on what you did with your budget, uh, the, in addition to the, uh, it would go into our overall availability for the debt, which is nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars that we have annually, go down a little bit each year. Uh, we have, you know, when the jail was built, it was believed, leading up to that and conveyed, that they would house federal inmates. And this goes back more than ten years. Probably, they probably talked about it fifteen years ago. There would be enough federal inmates to pay for itself. And there was a lot of word out there. The county commissioners at the time were just absolutely silly, uh, for not building that jail twice as big. And I heard that and I may have even said it sometimes. I'm so glad they did. Uh, right now, as we look at it, because you would have a bigger payment. Um, so we've got what we have. It wouldn't be double payment. So there are arguments there. But they did really well in a recession to get that jail built. Um, so we've got that payment. We have to have, uh, there is not enough money total after you account for the, uh, expenses of personnel to cover all that payment. The same is true now. There has not been a year since that jail opened that there had been enough external inmate revenues to cover that debt payment. I don't know that we ever would've met that when we rewind. I don't think that's, that was not accounted to jail.
Okay.
It shouldn't have, it was not built for federal inmates. I think some people used that as a way to promote it at the time, but that's not why it was built. But you will have money go toward it, uh, if that was offset.
Okay. Good questions. Hey, Forrest, our bud, our buddy's budget is over. What is that for? Is that for overtime and stuff?
Various lines. Um, two years ago, it was a lot of payouts for accrued comp time. Uh, that was, you know, it was a hundred and fifty over what we had actually increased the budget. It was actually four hundred thousand more than the initial budget for that year. So throughout the year, the commissioners added money, partly, I think a hundred and fifty of it was for the van and the transport officers for the federal program. There were a couple of vehicles purchased. Uh, inmate medical went up that year.
Sure.
Um, so it's mostly temporary salaries that go over a little bit, went over a little bit that year. And payouts for people who were leaving, who had accrued a lot of time over many years. They have increased, improved dramatically on their comp time accrual in the last two years. Uh, but when you have people who leave, you gotta pay them five, ten, sometimes in one case, forty-five thousand dollars two years ago that somebody was owed. Uh, and you, and in that case, that person was paid out at a higher rate because they'd been put in a different position. We could've paid them at a lower rate. They got moved to a higher level position, got paid at the new rate.
Yeah.
Um, and that's something that, that they're now aware of and hasn't happened since then. So that is where that is coming from. I don't know, you know, once the money's appropriated to sheriff, uh, he has control over kind of where it goes, adding and subtracting among his different areas. Um, but that is what we have seen go toward for the most part, with the exception.
So not really waste, just unperceived medical and.
Last year was mostly medical, if I remember correctly.
Last year, I worked with the sheriff to, every time I presented a budget amendment to the commissioners, I said, this is to cover medical. Uh, he moved money out of medical to other areas. We understood that that would happen. And that was to preserve, you know, everybody's way of dealing with things. But, uh, medical was big. Last year, medical is being more predictable, not predictable. Medical's not as high so far this year. It is a very unpredictable.
Yeah.
Expense because you have somebody that costs you thirty, forty thousand dollars. Um, so, and the sheriff has worked on ways to get that more predictable. Uh, and truly looking for how we can do that. Uh, but that's kind of where it is and what's going on. So there's nothing, you know, I'm sure you could look in and find some things. And that's why I came up budgeting them to add money. Uh, I think that generally, uh, it's not waste. I think generally, uh, communication on the front end about what's needed can help. Uh, because like I say, we've added to the request for several years. Uh, but I think at the end of the day, you know, we've gotta do these things. You've gotta have a vehicle. You've gotta have, it runs, it's reliable. Uh, you gotta have your, uh, staffing ratio, whether it's patrol or, uh, uh, detention or wherever else detectives as well. Uh, you gotta have those things figured out. And we've worked to try to, you know, we increased the salaries budget two years ago, partly because everybody had been budgeted at the beginning of the year at their starting rate. And when people gain another certification or have so much time, they get, they go higher. So one of the things that Rookie Marla did was go through the sheriff's budget and increase, starting last year, to budget everybody at the highest rate so that we had more wiggle room there and hopefully came in under. So that's something that we've tried to do. Uh, sheriff's trying to work with us on those things as well. Um, I mean, it's part of what you got to do to cover public safety in the county.
Well, you know, I appreciate sheriff's office, I do. We, um, we live in a sad time when every week you're seeing a cop kill. So this kind of over budget kind of rubbed me wrong because I know, you know, you can't put them on forty hours a week, set on their hands, and then the drug dealers and stuff just take over. And I, I figured a lot of that was from overtime from that because, you know, out where I live, I see it. And I'm sure you see it up here.
Sure.
So you'll never hear me complain about public safety in that way.
And staffing, one of the things we've talked about is can we get, we were talking about detention officers, how you get more, cover that. That doesn't cover, that, that, there's a big overtime issue that they can have there when they're down a person. So hopefully, if we're able to hire additional ones, that will help with that. Um, hopefully, we can look at whether he needs those, but he has to kind of tell us what he can do to help us with that because of what happens, like you're saying. You got an emergency, you gotta call them out. You can't say you work too many hours. You can work them under, but it may never work out that way. If we can have more coverage to relieve, it's gonna cost us more money on the front end, but it'd be more predictable and a way for us to move toward that. So, you know, I think that's, uh, something that, uh, is good for the county. It's something every time there's been a need to do it, we've worked to figure it out. Uh, and I'll continue to do that and have. Uh, at the same time, we gotta make the budget work. So, you know, and that's why we've cut from other areas and do some of those things to make it happen.
All right. Other comments, gentlemen?
I understand, Forrest, that if we look at page three, section B, the sheriff is designated as the contract administrator for the contract, which I understand that, I understand reading that. But, uh, there is, uh, some talk that he's, will retire in December. If he does, will that be filled by the sheriff that follows him? Or will we have to reappoint, will we have to change the contract?
It's gonna fall to the office.
There's probably a question for the attorney there.
Yeah. Will that fall to the office, though?
I think we could modify that by saying the, uh, elected sheriff of Madison County is the designated contract administrator.
Right. Okay.
Yeah. Other questions, gentlemen?
No.
All right. The chair will entertain a motion relative to the juvenile inmate memorandum of agreement between the sheriff of Madison County and the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services.
I'll make a motion. Public safety.
I'm sorry.
DPS.
DPS, I'm sorry. Yes, DPS. We have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second discussion. Matt, coming back to the point that you raised, um, I think we also need to attach to the motion that we direct our county attorney and the sheriff's office to work on an additional memorandum of understanding about what would happen to the additional staff at the end of this first year if the program went away.
Okay.
Okay?
Sure.
We don't have that in front of us.
Well, I think if the program goes away at any point, not just the first year.
Whatever.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Okay. So I would amend the motion to state that we direct our attorney to work with county manager and the sheriff on that provision.
Sure.
Okay. Is that properly stated, Donnie?
I understand.
Okay.
Yeah, I understand basically what you want me to do. You're going to approve this contract. You understand that it's gonna be additional personnel that the sheriff is gonna have there. You basically want an understanding that if this program goes away, that more or less there will be a reduction in force that the sheriff's office will go through. That will.
Proportionally.
Yeah, that will cut back on his personnel down there. And have that connected with the personnel that's related to this contract.
Correct.
We can certainly.
Correct.
Grab the document that will address those concerns.
So we have a motion amended. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the amended motion, please raise your right hand. The motion is unanimous. Thank you, Forrest.
Next, you have board appointments. You have five that would ideally be made during this meeting. Do you have the applications in that packet?
We did. I missed the application. I've got the list of the applications.
No.
I didn't answer.
Two, three.
They're all for the library?
Yeah, we can get the library, there's one for economic development, up for the library.
Okay.
There's not one for mountain area workforce development, which are recommendations.
Of Will Hoffman for that?
Will Hoffman.
Okay, I was, I was gonna ask to interpret that, so, okay.
All right.
Uh, the, I, I think what happened is there may not be applications in the electronic document. I think there are in the paper copy. And that's just Commissioner West and these one lady, Donnie.
Look at them, man. I got.
On the, um, Donnie and I can share, which will be.
We have requests from a board member for a quick bathroom break. He said, continue.
Yeah.
You can't do that.
In regards to the Mountain Area Workforce Development Board, um, is Terry, by default, already on that board as economic development coordinator?
She attends the meetings, but is not on the board.
Okay. Is there a benefit to having her actually on the board versus just attending the meetings? Or does she glean enough information from just attending the meetings?
I think she gets enough information from attending, um, and I think there is a benefit to having a superintendent. Who wants to sort of, you know.
And that's, yeah, and I'm not trying to circumvent him in any way. I was just asking.
So she, she is attending and aware, um, and I think that she'll get those benefits. And since we're limited to how many we can have on the county now because they're doing it by profession and you might not have your spot here.
Yeah.
I think since she can already go, probably gonna add somebody.
That's fine. And the part of the reason I was asking, just for clarification, not to circumvent Will in any way, but we have an, an opening on that board for next month.
Yeah.
And I was just trying to think ahead as far as that goes, so. All right. Okay. Very good. So I guess we need, well, wait for, uh, Commissioner Ford to take any action?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're gonna do, oh, we're gonna do.
Now, we, you've got, we've got, you gotta make a decision on the board of the library.
Yeah.
People.
Yeah.
We would need to do each board, I think separately, would we not, Forrest?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Um, Matt, you wanna make a motion relative to economic development? Mountain Area Workforce, rather, I'm sorry.
Um, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't, uh, um, in regards to Mountain Area Workforce Development Board, I move that we appoint Will Hoffman, uh, to fill the seat vacated by Sam Hutchins.
I will second that motion. We have a motion in a second to put our school superintendent on.
Point of clarification?
Yes, sir.
Does he still qualify as private sector, even though he's school board?
I actually think he's, I think that's a mistake. Isn't that supposed to be a community organization, I believe? The Chamber of Commerce has recommended him.
Okay.
And that is according to Nathan Ramsey. Uh, the director of workforce development.
Okay, so he would know.
Yeah.
Okay, so then my original motion stands.
Okay, second stance. All those in favor, please your right hand. All right, excellent. All right, let's move to library. It appears we have three vacancies. Am I looking at that? Two, two, I'm sorry. Two.
And they generally try to keep those geographically distributed. You have one in Hot Springs, in Marshall area.
You already looked at it solidly.
That's honey cut?
What it says.
Can we do these together, Forrest?
Hold on one second.
Yeah. Oh, that's fine. It apparently is Beth Honeycutt. And
We've got, we've got three here.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we have three applications for the libraries.
The, uh, I'm just making an observation without pointing out a name, but one of these individuals has been in the county for many, many years. Another one has only been in the county for six months. Nothing against that, but we have somebody with a long tenure. And not to say that the other individual might make an outstanding coordinator. Particularly considering their occupation, if you will note.
Yes, that's what we were just, yeah, making note of that.
Well.
I will say on geographic distribution, I'm sorry, they alter, there are enough spots, they alternate Marshall, Mars Hill. Because there's not, you can't evenly work those out because so many people are in both those areas. So you can, those two could overlap.
Yeah. Well, if there's no objection, the chair will move that we pick Bobby Pryn, P-R-Y-P-Y-R-O-N.
Pyron.
Pyron and Rick Rice as the two members.
I think you just contradicted yourself, Mr. Chair.
You, this one, this one's the one with like six months in the county.
Yeah. I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry. It was six years, not my bifocals weren't working, our trifocals. Years in Madison County. Yeah.
Honeycutt and Rice.
Yes, 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 my bad, my bad. I misspoke. Correction, accept all errors. Beth Honeycutt and Rick Rice. Thank you, gentlemen, for directing the old man the wrong direction again.
And the other, the other gentleman, I think we need to make sure we hold on to him for future consideration.
Absolutely.
Because he's got some assets he could bring to that board for sure.
He certainly does.
I think so, too.
Okay. So corrected, finally right. Beth Honeycutt and Rick Rice. Then we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Now, I'm going to be quiet. You guys do the rest of the discussion.
You, you, you can't.
That's the school teacher principal slash.
No, no, it's just in the DNA, Matt. All right.
The economic development board, you have Don Hollingsley going off. He lives in Marshall and is retiring.
Economic development.
Also in the county and also works for the SEC.
We don't have economic development.
Yes, right here, it's the one in very fine type print.
Yeah. No?
No.
Fine type print, hold on.
Very fine type.
Let me dig it out here so Matt and I can look at it.
Clearly trifocal, I love nothing at all. Here it is.
Yeah. Got you.
Okay.
But now this one, who's that? Who's this? Oh, his one, he was on.
He was five.
We didn't even.
But now this one, this one is economic development.
Yeah, no, this one's, yeah, I'm, I'm, I would make a motion, or I make the motion that we, uh, appoint Lee McElrath.
And I'll second it.
To the economic development board.
Yeah, we have a motion for Lee McElrath for the economic development board. Andy second.
I'm a second.
Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor of Lee McElrath for the economic development board, please raise your right hand.
Good.
And then we have the, they like to propose for June.
Wow.
Surplus property.
Yes, sir.
If anyone knows someone that would like to serve on the board, please have them go by the county office and fill out an application. We're we're going to have
Well, we actually, if you look at it, we've actually only got
We have one.
Like a few of those that
Two, yeah, three.
To come from scratch.
Yeah, and on those for the next month, there are some who will be eligible and willing for reappointment. And Mandy is confirming those if she hasn't already. Actually, it looks like she has, so. They're not all vacant.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Okay, Forrest? Surplus property?
We take, uh, we have bids on several parcels. One is for Bear River Lodge Lot 122. That's approximately one acre. You have an offer for $3,000. You can accept, deny, or counter.
Who's bid denied?
And there's supporting information for each one.
And we are currently paying $720 a year in HOA?
We are, but we do not have to pay.
Okay.
How big is the lot? Lot 122.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I'm, I'm agreeable with that.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Mr. Chair, I move we sell the property, they accept the bid.
And I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to sell the parcel at Bear River Lodge Lot 122 for the bid price of $3,000. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, moving on.
Next you have Lot 32 Breakaway. It's two tenths of an acre.
Two tenths of an acre.
Tax value is $457,000, 3280. You have two offers for this. Have a bid of $350, consider $200.
Two tenths of an acre.
Taxage $457,000. And our bid is $350?
I say so.
I say five.
We have a
Mr. Chair, I, I move that we accept the, uh, the high bid of $350 for that property.
I'll second.
We have a bid, we have a motion and a second to accept bid number one for $350. Lot 32 at Breakaway. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
And that was two one hundredths of an acre.
Yeah.
If that's printed correctly.
Oh, yeah.
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 Talk about a postage stamp.
So, yeah, that's a, yeah.
Size of this room.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah. All right.
Next is Lot 65 Breakaway. Physical address of that is 272 Serendipity Way. It's one acre, had a structure valued at $40,000. Combined tax value is $62,680. And you have the high bid of $15,000.
Geez. No, I say no.
Yeah, let's, let's hang on to that one.
Yeah. I move that we do not accept the bid.
I will second that. Hey, Mark, you're second. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of not accepting the bids? Okay?
Next you have Stamy Drive in Hot Springs. That's about two and a half acres. You have a $500 offer.
Yeah, I'll say no.
No.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to not accept the $500 bid on Stamy Drive and Hot Springs. All those in favors, raise your right hand.
Next you have a property known as Laurel Highlands Lot 8C. That is half an acre. Park tax value of $10,227. And current bid at $500.
It's a half acre? I can't see a half acre, no.
No. The chair will move we deny.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of not accepting the bid on Laurel Heights Lot 8C, please raise your right hand.
Next you have property known as Oak Hall Reserve Lot 10. That's one acre. You have a $500 bid. Tax value 12.5.
Again, I will move that we deny. And then we have a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Next you have Oak Hall Lot 1, Lot 22. 1.09 acres. Tax value 13,134, $500 bid.
Again, I will move we deny.
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Uh, 177 Darris Loop, one acre. $27,000 tax value. $500 bid.
I move to reject the offer.
Let's see, here's your tax card, right?
Yeah, the only thing is a $788 a year HOA.
But we don't have to pay that, correct?
Right. Okay. We have a motion and a second to deny. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Yeah, a good one.
17930, Highway 209, Hot Springs. That's 10.4 acres. Structure value $2,500. Tax value combined is $54,634, but $12,000 bid.
Discussion, gentlemen?
How, how many is a piece of property?
Ten acres.
Ten acres.
It's ten acres.
Ten acres. Commissioner Nelson, have you saw this, this property?
And keep in, keep in mind, if we accept this bid, this just starts the upset bid process.
That's why.
Yeah. Okay.
So
And at that price, I would be inclined to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think so. I mean, I think I might get some attention for this property.
So do you want to move?
I'll move, I'll move that we accept the bid and begin the upset bid process.
To begin the process at $12,000? All those in favor, raise your right hand.
If it's at Roanoke, we can always
Oh, yeah, we're always saying this. At least that's a halfway respectable start.
Yeah, I mean, it's
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, next you have a previous bid that was on Ivy Way, Lot 201. Approximately acre, tax value $27,000. There was a $500 bid received and accepted, received on January 4th, accepted on February 12th. Was advertised and it has been in the upset process. The bid got to $1,000.
This is the property of Ivy Way?
Yeah.
Lot 201?
201.
Yeah.
So we're currently at a thousand?
Yes, sir.
And it's a one acre?
Uh, yeah.
We asked him for 1,500, right? We countered, we countered back at 1,500.
He came back, split the difference. Yep.
Mr. Chair, I move that we s- we stay with our counter off.
Okay, I will second that. Uh, Mark, you're second, okay?
Sure.
All those in favor of staying with the 1,500, raise your right hand.
Are you with us?
Yeah, I'll go with it.
Okay, it's unanimous. All right.
I had to have an attorney consultation here.
Yeah, well, something in the water tonight, what can I say?
Thank you.
Thank you, Forrest.
Darris Lane, enough for our folks.
All right, we have got to public comment, all right? And Mr. John, come on up to the mic. And if you would be kind enough to hold it fairly close, so otherwise it won't pick up on the stream.
Might need some coffee.
Well, we've had quick meetings for a while. This was, this was a little longer. And we got a lot done tonight, so that's what we're all about.
Thank you, sir.
I've got you an extra one here, feel special.
Oh, okay.
You're special.
Uh, actually, resolution, I'll pass it around. There you go. There you go.
Thanks, sir.
And Forrest will be our timekeeper. All right.
Well, I've been here before and I've talked individually to a lot of the county commissioners. I've been at this for a year. A solid year. The same bar, I've not been able to get a yea or nay out of nobody. So what I'm asking you for is either approve it or disapprove it. I've talked to several of us, my arguments there. And I've talked to several of us individually, and I would like to have a vote one way or the other. You know, a year is too long for this to go. But Dale County has approved this law, Mitchell County, Yancey County just approved it like a month ago or less. There's no reason not to have it. I'm not asking you for anything that I'm not already doing. I just want to ask me to change the law where I can keep the animals I do catch and help people out when they need some help. A lot of people out there hunting sees a box and bangs. They take it, have it mounted, and they're automatically given your credit. And it's also a landowner issue about landowner rights. People being able to do what they should be able to do with their land or what they want to do with their land. And there's the disease factor in it, too. We've had several instances of foxes. Especially around Buckle County, that's bit people. And I would just like to ask the commission for a vote one way or the other. Is there any questions? Anybody, anybody want to ask me anything?
So you're, you're wanting to trap
First of all, this is public comment.
Yeah, it is. You can't say a word, I'm sorry.
No, to answer your que- I'll answer your question. I'm not in a, got the horse in your race, if any, huh? I just want to follow the law that, uh, the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission has already adopted. The law that states that we can't do this is a county law that was passed in 1978. And times have changed. Situations have changed. I have a decreditation allowance from the state of North Carolina. And people call me, you know, you come out here and take care of these boxes that's threatening my pets or my chickens or whatever, and I just have to tell them, no, sir, I can't do that. You have to do it yourself because I'm not a lion. That would be worse than me going out and shooting a bear out of season. I would probably get a bigger fine for shooting a fox than I would the bear. And I don't want to put you on the spot or anything, but it's fine.
Well, you can't put us on the spot because it's public comment. So legally, it needs to be done as an agenda item. Am I correct, Mr. Attorney? Not to speak for the whole board, but
There won't be a vote tonight.
Two cents worth on that.
All right, Tom, thank you for coming and making your point. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Is there any other business to come before this board this evening? If not, if not, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. We are adjourned.